All right, it's 6:31, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. So let's start the roll call. So Lance McNally, present. Julie?
Julie Byers, present.
Carol?
Carol Hofstas, present.
Lori?
Laura Schifrin, present.
And Mike?
Mike Verosco, present. Sorry, you guys were all muted for some reason.
Okay, can you hear us, Mike? Fine?
Yeah, I can hear you fine now.
Okay, great. So let me just, I'm just gonna jump right down to, let's see, 2.5. So correctly, we're on Julie, in our last meeting, you wanted to have like a little update before getting involved on the Safe Routes to School program? Was that correct? That helped me.
It was Carol.
No, it was me.
Oh, it was Carol. Okay, I'm sorry, Carol.
Hi, and I've already talked, I've already met with Rachel O'Donnell from the Safe Routes to School.
Okay.
Gonna meet again in August.
Okay, I did ask selectmen, Chaz, to join us for an update. Did you want one, Carol, or do you need one? Or did I just bug Chaz for no good?
Um, I guess I don't need one, because I had, we had a, well, Rachel and I did have a probably what, an hour meeting to go over everything.
Good. Okay.
What we're gonna do in the fall.
Okay. All right. So Chaz, feel free to drop off then, and thank you so much for joining. I guess you can see that I'm not violating open meeting laws.
I see that.
And communicating, and communicating with board members.
Well, I, I'm glad, Carol, that you are, that you did talk with Rachel, because that's what I was gonna say, touch base with her. We left it off that, on the planning board at the time, my major concern, or our major concern, was that we got the schools to sign on, and that's really what my role was at that particular time. So now that they're signed on, you know, Rachel is probably gonna be running with, with what's going on going forward. I'm sure she let you know exactly what, what she's planning on doing.
Yeah, that's why we're meeting in August to go over what needs to be done.
Yeah.
She didn't, I guess that's, she's gotta wait till then before she starts approaching the schools again.
Correct, yeah, that's what they asked. They wanted to get through the, the summer, and then they can jump on. But when you get to that point, if you do need my help for anything, just let me know, and I'll be more than glad to do it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Carol, thank you, Chaz.
Alrighty. I'm, I'm gonna stick around for a minute, then I got a water meeting I gotta go to.
A water meeting?
Yeah.
All right.
It's I Live a Glamorous Life, Lance.
I know, and you've brought plenty of water since you've joined this.
There you go.
You're doing a great job, Chad. Just as long as we don't float away.
No, well, I can't guarantee that, but.
All right. All right, so one, all right, so let me jump back. So 1.2, I don't have any additions or deletions to the, to the agenda, unless I see Beth going crazy here, and I don't.
Now, there's just one, one correspondence that I put in the folder, so.
Okay, all right, so we do have one addition that's going to be in correspondence. So, all right, 1.3, so any comments on the minutes from June 14th? I know, Laura, you submitted some changes, right?
I did not. I submitted the fact that I would make a motion to approve them as presented.
Okay, and so do you wanna make such a motion if there's no discussion?
I did, sir.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Julie? Uh, you're on mute, Julie.
Julie Byers, aye.
Carol?
Yes.
If you could state your name and yes, just so we do a.
Carol Hofstas, yes.
And Lori already has. Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. All right, so let's move on to work session. So first of all, master plan update. So Beth, is you, are you aware, is Kim going to attend? I know that she sent an email with an update.
Nope, she sent us a status report. I can read it, or Mike can read it, either way.
Well, why don't one of you read it?
I don't mind reading it.
Thank you, Beth.
Uh, you're welcome. Hello. At the Friday, July 9th meeting of the Master Plan Committee, the following chapters were discussed and agreed to release as drafts to the planning board for comment. The chapters include housing, economic development, and zoning. When reviewing and providing comments, please use track changes, as this ensures we know exactly what and where in the chapter you are referencing. Also, if you have questions outside of the chapter, please forward them either directly in an email or in Word, so that we can address those separately. Please note that for each chapter, the maps from MRPC will be integrated into the final report. The MPC, Master Plan Committee, will be meeting on Friday, the 16th, to review two additional chapters to send over to the planning board. Our last meeting in July is the 26th, at which time we will review any remaining chapters and the layout for the final draft. As soon as practical after the 7/26 meeting, we will send the complete document to MRPC for their review, after which we will send back to the planning board. Please let us know if you have any other questions for the committee, and we can address them on July 16th. We see the finish line is on the horizon. Best regards, Kim Craven, Chair.
Okay, any, any comments from, from any board members?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do.
Go ahead, Lori.
Okay, so I reviewed and sent to both of you, you and Beth, my comments of the chapters that I reviewed, except that I saw that there was a few more things added this afternoon, late this afternoon. I only got to see the housing one that was updated. I don't, I don't know if everyone has read it or not, but I reviewed the first one that looked to be a lot like, a lot of the documents that Chaz had done after our last public forum. The problem with that is, or that I saw right off, was that it was two years old. July 2019, and here we're gonna present something that has data that's two years old. And then today came the doc, came a document saying, "Housing update," or something, I'm not sure, Beth. I, I don't have it in front of me, because I, I don't do the dual screen thing. But my question was, who was the source of the update that we got today for the housing plan, or chap, housing chapter? Do we know?
I don't know, Lori, but I would probably recommend that you, as a de facto member of the Master Plan Committee, I would just direct that comment directly to Kim.
Okay, so that, so, Beth, that came from Kim today?
Yes, the, the chapter, the housing chapter just came in this afternoon to the office, and I forwarded it literally right after it came in. I also put it in the SharePoint folder for reference, so.
I mean, I saw that part of it was, um, which really speaks to the housing shortage. The housing production from 2014 to present, seven years and 42 units is really sad. So, um, that's, that's an issue. And that leads into the zoning, which, did you draft the report that was to the July 8th? Was that from the July 8th meeting? No?
What, what document?
From the, from the zoning, July 8th zoning meeting. That was attached as well.
Well, um, I'm, I'm thinking that you might be confusing. She sent three chapters this afternoon? Are you talking about?
I don't think she said, she couldn't have sent that. That was the zoning. I don't, I don't think so.
Do you mean zoning board, do you mean zoning board of appeals?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're talking about a document from the zoning board of appeals? Okay, are you talking, what, what is the document?
The 8th meeting, you had it in, in correspondence.
Okay, so what that is, is a, a notice of decision? Is that what you're referring to? No.
No.
Okay, so there are building commissioners' letters in the.
Oh, yeah, I saw them.
Okay, so, so what I, what I, well, the board is, has a copy of the decision that the zoning board of appeals granted a variance on June 30th, but that's all, that's in the file from the CBA.
I might have been dreaming it, because I was going too fast through the documents. Okay, well, anyway, I've been reading them, and, um, yeah, okay, Lance, I'll direct when any que, any.
And even probably better yet, if there's a way that you can attend the next master plan committee, that's probably more effective in terms of getting your comments across.
I will try.
Okay.
Yep. They said the 16th, right?
Yes. Okay, anything else on the master plan committee? All right, 2.2, appointment, reappointment of a planning board representative to the Monticentis Regional Planning Commission?
Yep, that's Ms. Laura Schifrin, so if you guys want to make that motion.
Can I have a mo, motion to reappoint Lori to the MRPC?
MRPC, okay.
Lance, I was just about to say that I make a motion to appoint Laura Schifrin to the, uh, what?
MRPC.
MRPC, there we go.
Do I have a second?
Carol Hofstas will second it.
All right. Julie? How do you vote?
Need to third it?
All right, let me just say, any discussion before voting? All right, Julie, how do you vote?
Julie Byers, yes.
Carol?
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lori?
Laura Schifrin, yes.
Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
Lance McNally, yes. Okay. All right, letter of support for MRPC for RAISE Planning Assistant and Grant Application?
Oh, okay, so, yeah, that was in the folder. Basically, MRPC is preparing a federal grant application. So if you would go to look in your folders, I did a, wait a second, sorry. Under work session. Yeah, where is it? For some reason, I can't find it, 223. Oh, there it is, yeah. It's basically a letter of support for the, the grant application that MRPC is submitting. And I'll, I'll just read it briefly, so you know what it's all about, but it, they are applying, as a region, the town of Townsend, here's the support letter, is in support of the Monticentis Regional Planning Commission's application for the development of a regional climate change resiliency plan for the Monticentis region, which includes 22 communities with a total population of 244,482 people. Under the RAISE, which is the acronym R-A-I-S-E, grant program, the creation of this document will align with the community goals of reviewing and integrating all local documents from our member communities to create one regional document, where we can apply for additional grants for better climate change preparedness. And then it goes on, I think you all have a copy of the draft that I put together, and, and Chaz also did for the Board of Selectmen. So this would just be your approvals to go ahead and submit this letter of support. The MRPC did submit the grant today, but this can be sent via US Post. It's basically a regional climate change, climate resiliency plan. It's kind of, it's a planning assistant grant.
Yeah, it looks, it looks real, really good, Beth. Just one comment or question. Do we want to do something so that I can sort of sign it on behalf of the board, unless, so everyone doesn't have to run into Town Hall and sign it, or I could just like, sign it, and, and, so I guess I'm asking for a motion for the Chair to approve this on behalf of the board?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Julie, how do you vote?
Julie Byers, yes.
Carol?
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lori?
Laura Schifrin, yes.
Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. So Beth, if you just wanna modify this to, you know, sort of like Lance McNally on behalf of the board, or what have you, and then I can come in and sign it, so that Julie, Carol, Mike, and Lori don't have to come into Town Hall to sign it?
Sure, yep.
And I think I'll come in, so it probably makes more, uh, makes more emphasis if it's an original signature, as opposed to scanning and stuff like that.
Absolutely, and then we'll mail it together with the Board of Selectmen's letter as soon as you can come in.
Okay, are you gonna be in the office tomorrow?
Yep.
Okay, I think I'll probably try to come in tomorrow, then.
Thank you.
Maybe I can get my canoe out and paddle there, because of all the work Chad's been doing. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may interrupt, and Beth, if I may, go back to my previous comment about the new zoning bylaw. It does say, I, I'm, I'm not sure, does, did that, it was three hours ago that you put it in, it's in the work session, okay? And it does say, July 8th, for, if you can, can you go back to that? Do you see your list of?
Okay, you're in work session, not in correspondence?
No, it was in work session.
Okay.
All right, is there a number?
Yeah.
Last one on the list.
2.3 LOS RAISE PBMRPC?
That's the letter of support, yeah.
No, that's not it.
Nope. Representation to Monticentis, which is you? The appointment, no?
It's in the file you sent us, in the link, under work session. There's, I don't know, seven or nine.
When, when you say a link, are you referring to the?
In the folder.
When you say the folder, are you referring to the folder for tonight's meeting?
Yeah.
And if so, what, what file name? Because I'm looking at 2.0 work session. There's 2.1 Master Plan, 2.4 Chapter 43D, 2.5, 2.6.
I'll see if I can get back.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just not a, it says, "New zoning bylaw, July 8th, 2021," is put up three hours ago. Hi, Beth, and it's shared. That, that's the, it must be in the work session link. I mean, here's what's here, comment, planning board members, three days ago, master plan circulation, master plan historic and cultural, master plan water doc, which is newer than the last water doc that I looked at, but it looked the same.
Can you forward it to Beth?
Okay, it's, but it's in that folder that we were sent.
I, I see what you're saying now. You're talking about the new zoning review. That's the master plan chapter. That's, I'm sorry, that's the draft master plan chapter that just came in from the master plan chair at like, 3:00. So I forwarded on, and I put it into the collective file. I can rename that, because that should have said "new."
Well, it says, well.
Oh, it does, okay.
It does, but in the document, it says zoning review, but I couldn't tell. Because I had listened to the last zoning board meeting that you had, where they did mention that planning should be looking at zoning bylaw changes. And I just happened to hear that, and then I saw this, and I thought, well, oh, is this coming from the planning board? Okay, now you're telling me that it was the master plan that wrote this.
Exactly, and I think it's, it's entitled zoning review, however, I think it's the zoning chapter, draft chapter of the master plan. I, I don't know. I have not even had a chance to look at it, but.
And perhaps that's it. There's just not a lot of consistency. If you're, if you're, whatever chapter, package, second, whatever you're gonna call it, they should all be called the same thing.
Right.
I mean, they're all, should be whatever department, and then it's report, review, recommendation, however, whatever you wanna do, but they all should be the same.
Okay.
I may not be wrong, maybe it's just me.
No, no, you're absolutely right, and that was a quick fire, you know, forward, and so, no, you're right. What I'll do is I'll go back and I'll rename them similar to the circulation and transportation, the historic and cultural resources, so we can, you know, be consistent, absolutely.
I don't know that it was, I, I, I'm not putting this on you, Beth.
No, 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 that's okay.
No, I'm just saying, I don't think it was you. I think for whatever they put forward, there should be a consistency for each chapter from them. We shouldn't be calling it something else, other than what they're giving us, and if, if no one else.
Well, you have something else, you're meeting on the 16th, then.
Yeah. Definitely. For sure. All right.
Okay, um, all right, 2.4, Chapter 43D?
Yeah, I've been looking at that. Is Chaz still on? Hey, yes, he is, that's great. Chaz, an interesting note on the Chapter 43D application. I did start, you know, picking this up. It's been on the back burner, because I know, you know, I just wanted to wait till everything was finalized with Town Meeting, but I dove back into it today a little bit, and I discovered that, um, it is now part of the Community One Stop for Growth Grant Program. So it's that, and that is a single application portal, and a collaborative review process of community and economic development grant programs, and that make targeted investments based on development continuum. So I think that's really good news, again, because I think a big part of the expedited local permitting and Townsend being, you know, approving this Mass General Law at Town Meeting, as it did, is, is really gonna benefit in terms of the grant application process, because now it's, it's all in one place. So I am working to get the application done. I know I said that last time, but right now it's more of a, on the forefront to finalize it. So there is a, a new application, too. This kinda happened over the last month during COVID, so they updated. There's a new application process, and so I'm still working on that, but I do expect by, I would like to have it submitted by the 1st of August, you know, just to have it done. We'll need, still need to collect a few more signatures, and that, that's fine, but, um, an interesting development there.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Beth, when, when you say there's a new application, is that a new application for everyone, or is there a new property being considered?
Oh, uh, no, it's the towns' application to the state that we, we have already approved, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, 2.5, and I know Carol's already spoke to a lot of that, Safe Routes to School update?
We don't have anything else.
Okay, so we love, we.
Vacation!
Yes, we wish you, wish you luck in your August meeting, and we can't wait to, once you have that meeting, to get an update, okay?
Okay.
All right.
I'm gonna run, guys, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Chaz. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Enjoy your water meeting.
Right, if I can get out of here.
All right, um, all right, MVP update?
Okay, so that, that's still kind of on the back burner. I don't know if you would like to set up a meeting tonight, or what we wanna do with that, but that's just kind of sitting right now.
What do you recommend?
I think, yeah, I mean, we have some ideas in terms of, I, I really think that everyone has to go through the tables and, and kind of get familiar with the document before, obviously, reaching out to staff and responsible parties, so I don't know where everyone is with that, but have you all had a chance to read the document? So, I know Julie's.
I have not. Do we wanna just take an action to review the document, and we put that on our agenda for our next meeting?
Yeah, that would be great, if everybody could really take a look at it, you know, especially the areas, the tables that I pulled out, where, uh, that, there would be, you know, setting up action items and scheduling meetings and, and following up on that.
Beth, is this in that folder that you've been sending out in, to everyone in the, in one of those Google Doc folders?
Yes, in the SharePoint folders, the SharePoint folder?
Oh, yeah, maybe it's a SharePoint, just.
Yeah, it is, but I can, I can send it again to the board, just the document, so that you're not sifting through all the folders.
That would be great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Beth.
All right, you're welcome.
All right, and then last, 2.7, walkability study?
That is on the back burner, according to Sherri Bean, because of the grant. They're trying to pull the grant together that I just mentioned to you. So right now, there's, there isn't anything going on with this, the walkability study. However, they have some interns working on the intersection studies, and I asked her, you know, if Townsend's on the docket for that, and she thought that Canal Street 119 intersection may, may start this summer. That's as far as I got with that, so hopefully, hopefully.
All right, so Mike, are you good for correspondence?
He has, he has the notices from towns and other towns.
I have it right here, just pulling it up on my computer. All right, so 3.1 correspondence, notices from other towns. Groton Planning Board, public hearing notice dated 7/8/2021 at 7:00 PM in Town Hall. Special permanent applicant, purpose to construct a shared driveway for three house lots. Number two is Pepperell Zoning Board of Appeals, notice of decision, a variance was granted to locate the proposed accessory apartment outside the principal residential structure. And in addition, to be newly constructed and attached to an existing detached garage, and a special permit to allow new accessory apartment, 35 Mount Lebanon Street, Pepperell, Mass. Lunenburg Planning Board, public planning, public hearing notice, today at 6:35 in Town Hall, for review and request the cutting of three shade trees, construction of four driveways onto five lots, with lots two and three sharing a common drive. And notices from Townsend, Townsend Zoning Board of, Zoning Board of Appeals, notice of decision, indecision granting a variance to Kevin Smith and Kenneth Tully for the property located on Warren Road, map 32, block 2, lot 0. Constructed entrance and common driveway located less than the required separation of 500 feet from an existing common driveway, serving 101, 103, and 105 Warren Road.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mike? All right, 3.2, Beth, that's probably you, planning board member vacancy, volunteer response forms?
Yes, there's still one vacancy. There is a full member vacancy right now. It is posted and advertised. It's on, it's on the town website. I did hear from Sulicio, who had submitted a volunteer response form. She, her first pick was the FINCOM. She's been seated on the FINCOM, and so, oh, well, so much for us. So we're, yeah, the planning board is, is still looking.
Okay, so everyone, bug your friends, see if you can solicit one of your neighbors or a friend.
Thanks.
All right, 3.3, letter from Mass Audubon?
Yeah, the planning board office received a letter. It is in your correspondence list of documents. I don't know if anyone has been able to read it, or if you have any questions. I did distribute the copy, a hard copy of the, um, the Forest Carbon Market Solutions, a guide for Massachusetts municipalities. I submitted it to Town Properties Committee, Capital Planning, Conservation. It's basically, I, the Board of Selectmen, so I think I, I distributed like, six to seven copies. And it's just basically a forest management and potential, potential income, I'm thinking, or carbon credits for forested lands on town-owned properties, so, and also for individual private properties, but there, it's about the carbon market and understanding how the carbon market is going to be working for, you know, for us and whatnot, or if it can work for us. So, that's, I thought, was the. So that's, I thought, was an interesting.
Okay, any action required on our parts?
No, I don't think so, just, uh, information.
Okay, 3.4, um, I saw your letter, uh, to the Building Commissioner on the, um, full array.
Yes, yeah, so, uh, an email confirmation was received as requested from the applicant next amp, uh, to verify that they, you know, were in compliance with stormwater permit conditions. So I think that is in your file, uh, if you read that, and I did take a ride out, um, this afternoon to look at the, um, the plantings for the revised planting plan. Uh, that also looks great, um, so.
You weren't run over by a tractor or anything?
No, no, nope. So that, that was very, yeah, everything looks good, so.
Okay, um, and I don't know if 3.5 and 3.6 are related, but in terms of, um, um, the town clerk's, uh, posting requirements?
Yep, that's just basically saying that the, um, the, uh, blackboard, or the board out by Town Hall is now the primary posting, area instead of the website, although the website will be updated, you know, all the time, so. But they've made the, the, the official posting out on the blackboard.
Did they change it from there to the website? Because?
They did for a while.
Okay.
And we had a problem.
Yeah, we had a problem because the website was down, so we didn't have our, okay, and 3.6, uh, Town Council Advisory on, um.
Open meetings, yeah.
Yeah, Lori will love this.
Yeah, so we are, um, the governor has allowed the continuation of remote meetings, um, and through April of 2022. Um, no requirement for a quorum face-to-face, so, um, you know, at the pleasure of the board, you guys can decide how you want to meet and, uh, let me know.
I, I think that unless anyone objects, that I would like to just continue, um, until, you know, for, for, at least for a short time, or at least for, until we, we decide otherwise, just to have Zoom meetings. Yes, Lori?
Um, well, that's fine with me, but it's that to April of 22, that's a little confusing because in the documents that were in what we read today, you know, in, well, I don't know which folder, but in, in there, there was a notice, maybe it was the one from Kathy Spofford, that, um, gave the governor's, um, outline, and one of them said, December 31st of 21.
And no, and they extended it. There was a second document that came out.
Oh, 20, okay.
Yes.
I did see, I did see both.
Yeah, sorry, um, Kathy Spofford's, um, memo came out in May, May 21st, which was well before the end of the state of emergency.
Right.
Additional guidance. Sorry, that was a little confusing, but that one actually should have been, I should have conveyed that to you the last Planning Board meeting, but it didn't get, it didn't get caught on that meeting, so. All right, but yeah, so that's, that's the big thing, March 12th, 2020, um, so, no, I'm sorry, April 1st, 2022, at which time the extension will be repealed, so.
Okay.
That's great.
I just wanted to make a comment in reference to the mailing that you sent, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Um, in reference to the mailing that you sent to the Town Properties Committee, um, because I, there isn't one.
Oh.
So, yes, there were members of that committee that are waiting to be reappointed. And I don't know, there was some, apparently the Board of Selectmen did reappoint them, but there's no letters that have gone out uh, for getting sworn in.
Yes.
Because something about having a joint meeting, but I don't know what joint meeting they're going to have, who they're going to have the joint meeting with.
Yeah.
So there's no, there's, right now, there's no legal committee to meet.
Uh huh, yeah, well, I do know that there were a lot of reappointments made, um, so I think it's safe to say, I don't know if Town Properties was reappointed, but it's pretty safe to say you can go back to the meeting, um, I think it was like June 29th, the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and just look through and see who was reappointed, and then go ahead and, because at this point, um, we, you know, I, I'm not surprised that they didn't receive an appoint, a reappointment confirmation letter, you know, indicating it's time to go get sworn in, just because of the administrative, um, workload right now and the staff. So we're, you know, understaffed without our executive assistant, so.
Well, um, okay, I spoke to one of the selectmen, and, um, there may still be a problem. This was just yesterday or the day before, because I was wondering about the swearing in kind of thing. Because you really don't, I mean, if you know that it happened, you don't have to wait for your letter.
No.
You can go in, get sworn in, but I guess we can't go and get sworn in, so.
Well, no, uh, oh, that, I, I understand your point. I was just gonna, yeah, I, I would think that you could anyway, but I can't say for sure. You know, you, you have a good point. I mean, but if it was in a Board of Selectmen's meeting, it's a public meeting, it's on record. I think that's sufficient, but maybe you should ask Kathy Spofford, you know, directly, that question, because I'm pretty sure she's swearing in, um, you know, Dave Fanioli, for example, who was reappointed to the zoning Board of Appeals as an associate. I know that he went in, was sworn in, but I don't think he got a letter, so.
Yeah, I understand that, okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, that's all right. 3.7, Building Commissioners Determination Letters?
Yeah, those are all in your folder, and if anybody has any questions, they certainly can. I'm going to put them in there as they roll out because a lot of them have, um, potential, um, action items for the planning board, but not until I get an application, obviously. But it's just a little, you know, idea of what's going on out there and.
Okay, anything, anything that, that you want to make sure that the board's aware of?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, mostly informational. I think at this point, I would rather not discuss it in a public meeting because it obviously hasn't been, you know, no application's been filed, and I think, you know, so.
Okay, all right, unless there's any other comments, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn then?
I'll make motion to adjourn. I'll second Carol.
All right, and how do you vote, Julie?
Julie Byers, yes.
Carol?
Carol Hofstas, yes.
Lori?
Laura Schifrin, yes.
Mike?
Mike Verosco, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. All right, everyone have a great evening, and our next meeting is July the 26th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, bye now.